First order of business is approval of the minutes. Does anybody have any changes or corrections?
I make a motion. You're good?
Yeah.
I can make a motion, be accepted?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The motions are good. Okay. First order of business is 502 Sproutbrook Road. Okay, your name, please?
Patrick Neville.
Patrick Neville? Okay, you're the applicant, you're the owner of the home?
Yep.
Okay. Last month, we did your application. It was all complete. You know, everything is here and all like that. So tonight, we're just here for, if anybody has any questions, or does anybody in the audience, this is a public hearing. Okay, so I see that you gave me a revised floor plan, but it's just that the deck is extended a little bit.
The architect forgot to include the deck on the back of the property, so there's four pages there that just show where the deck is.
Right.
It has nothing to do with making the variance any different. It's just bringing the deck to the corner of the house.
Right, right. You're looking to put a second story on top of your home, your current home. Okay. In order to do that, though, because your structure is non-conforming, you're gonna need a variance for the 25 percent. What I mean, not conforming, you could improve up to 25 percent. After that, you have to get a variance. And you're improving 100 percent, basically, you're putting the whole second floor on. And the other one would be for 30 yard side yards required, and you're providing 19 six, so you need a 10 foot six variance. That's what you're looking for there. And, let's see, one for that, two for that. That's it, two, I guess, right? All right, okay. Want to tell us a little bit about what you're planning to do?
The house was built in 63, I believe. They definitely cut a few corners in insulation and things like that, that they completely left out. We've been patching the house together for the last few years. So finally, we're at a point that lumber prices have finally started coming back down again. We were trying to do this back in 2019, and then things changed. So we actually modified the plans to make it smaller.
Right.
And that's the plans you have in front of you. And it's still staying a three-bedroom, but we just want to add an office space and update the kitchen and stuff like that.
Right.
What's the footage of it now, without the renovation?
It's like 1,100.
And how much is it gonna be with the renovation?
Twenty-two.
Okay, okay. So still a pretty modest house?
Yeah, it's still small. We have houses that are right next to us that are a bit bigger.
All right, it's 26 by 44, correct?
Yes.
26 by 44 is what you're looking for. All right. Does anybody in the audience who'd like to speak to this? Nobody, okay. What I'm gonna do is gonna go over the five factors. These five factors is what we use to inform us whether we, you know, should we grant the variance or not, basically, what it is. It helps us. First fact is, will an understandable change be produced by the character of the neighborhood, or will a detriment to nearby properties be created by granting area variance? And your answer is, there'll be no undesirable change or detriment to the nearby properties. I agree with that. I did a site visit down here, and I looked, and I saw, there's some houses down there are already two stories. There are a number of two-story houses in the area. Can the benefits be sought, achieved by some method, other method feasible to pursue other than the variance? And no. I guess the only other thing would be move, I guess, basically, right?
We don't wanna do that, our neighbors.
Right. All right. Is the requested area variance substantial? The requested variance is for a second-floor addition, a 30-foot yard setback to an existing structure. Substantial, yeah, it's a 100 percent variance. I mean, you know, you're putting a whole second floor on, but in today's real estate market and all like that, that's probably the best of best you can make, instead of movement or like that. So I understand. So today, unfortunately, it doesn't become substantial. Will the purpose proposed variance have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood? No adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions. I agree with that, because there are, like I said, there are a number of two-story homes that all it's gonna do is improve the neighborhood, it's not gonna bring a neighborhood down anyway. Is the alleged difficulty self-created? Not self-created. We purchased the home in 1963 in August of 2003. We have outgrown the current location. Well, it is self-created, because you had too many kids and you decided, so, you know, you created it, nobody else. I mean, that's a trick question sometimes, people say, is it created? Yeah, but it's something that you wanna do, and we understand it. So that thing doesn't necessarily mean that we hold that against you, that it was self-created, is what I'm trying to say. Okay. Is there any other questions for any board members on this variance? Any questions? Okay, any, no other, nobody wants to speak?
I wanna ask a couple of questions.
Oh, go ahead. Oh, you have to, can you stand up? You wanna talk?
Cynthia Neville.
All right, come on up to the microphone.
I was just gonna say, there's letters.
Oh, they can't hear you back there. Oh, the letters, okay. You're right, I forgot.
I just wanted to say, there were letters from the neighbors.
Right, from the neighbors.
Yes.
You got good neighbors here. All right, you got three letters. Let's see. This is from Selena and Philip Brawman. I hope this note finds you. I'm writing to express our full support for the upcoming project on neighbors Patrick and Cynthia Neville's house, located at 502 Sproutbrook Road. I understand the project requires a variance for the current town's regulations, and I would like to approve my perspective on why this variance should be considered favorably. I have discussed the project with next-door neighbors, and I'm confident that their plans will significantly enhance the aesthetic and functional value of their property, thereby contributing positively to our entire neighborhood. The proposed construction includes improvements that, while outside the current variance, are designed with great care and consideration for the surrounding homes and the community overall character. From our discussions, I am confident they will manage their additional responsibly, minimizing any potential disruptions. My family and I have no concerns about the project, and looking forward to seeing the positive changes it will bring. We appreciate living in a community where neighbors can undertake improvements that benefit everyone, and we're happy to support this initiative. Thank you for your attention, and we please feel free to reach out any questions. That's from Medina Brahm at 504 Sproutbrook Road. This is from Richard and Kelly Kimmer, 506 Sproutbrook Road. Dear Mr. Dean and Phillips Town Zoning Board members, I'm writing to express my full support for new construction project at my neighbor's property, located at 502 Sproutbrook Road. I can assure you that the building addition will not adversely affect my family or our daily routine. Their plans, which have been thoughtfully designed, promise to significantly enhance the appearance and functionality of their home, adding value not only to their property, but to our entire neighborhood. My neighbors have consistently shown consideration for the community, ensuring that the remodeling process will be conducted with minimal disruption. I believe this renovated home will greatly benefit our area and will fully support their efforts to improve their home. Thank you for your attention to this matter. And the third one, boy, you must've got the whole neighborhood out, huh? The third one is from 500 Sproutbrook Road, Donna Meany, Dear Mr. Dean and Phillips Town Zoning Board. I'm writing to express my enthusiastic support for renovation project at my neighbor Pat and Cynthia's Neville's property. Patrick has been telling me all about the renovation, I'm excited to see them finally start construction. This is a project they've waited to do since 2020, and was delayed because of the pandemic. With Patrick's knowledge of construction, I know this project will be managed with exceptional care and professionalism. And I know they're committed to our neighborhood, and they are committed to maintaining a peaceful and respectful environment during this period. I believe this renovation project is a valuable addition to our community. It not only enhances the aesthetic appeal of the property, but also contributes to the overall improvement and modernization of our neighborhood. Such developments are essential for continued growth and vitality of our town. Moreover, my neighbors have always gone above and beyond to ensure minimal disruption to those around them. I am sure the considered approach will include maintaining reasonable hours of operation and effective managing noise levels. I wholeheartedly support my neighbors in their endeavors, and I'm excited to see the final results of their hard work. Should you require any further information with this discussed project, please hesitate to contact me. All right, you're gonna have some opening party when you get the house finished, huh? Big picnic, that's for sure. All right, I just wanna make a...
I wanted to ask him a couple of questions.
Sure.
The house at no point is over 40 feet high, is that correct?
No, I think on the plans, it tops off.
It says 36 and 10.
Thirty-six, yep.
Okay. And you're not increasing the non-conformity, you're just going straight up from the...
Straight up, staying. And the only thing would be on the, if you look at the plans, is a dent on the back of the house.
Yeah.
We would be removing that, and that square footage would be added to the front to enclose the staircase going to the second floor.
Okay. Okay, very good, thank you. That's all I have.
That's it, any other questions?
I have one more.
Sure, go ahead.
Can you have a pair of microphones? Oh. Do you have them?
No, you're gonna pull closer.
They're very close.
Closer.
Okay, thank you.
So, the side of the house that's already encroaching into the setback, did one of the neighbors that shares that border with you write one of those letters?
Yep, that's 504.
Okay, all right.
That was the first letter.
All right, so you're already in that setback, you're gonna go a little bit higher, but neighbor doesn't object to it.
Yeah, when we bought the house, when we bought the house, it stays right on the foundation walls and everything. We're just going straight up from that.
Okay, all right, and there's a letter of support from that neighbor, okay.
That's the letter that had the variance on it.
Okay.
Any other questions? Anybody? Make a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and make a motion now to vote on the variance?
I'll second.
You second it?
Just, that's fine, just make sure that someone makes a motion that this is a type two action under seeker.
Dr. Wash wants to speak.
Seeker.
Seeker, right. Okay, make a motion to type two action on seeker?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now I make a motion to vote on the variance?
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye, okay.
I vote to approve.
Approve, okay.
Approve.
Approve, Vinnie?
Because it's not in the support from the neighborhood and the not increasing the non-conforming, I approve also.
Okay, and I approve. You're all set.
Thank you so much.
You're gonna have a big construction party. What I'm gonna give you here is, I'm gonna give you a form, which allows you to go tomorrow morning and apply for your building permit.
I do, Leslie, thank you.
Okay, thank you, good luck to you.
I forgot about that seeker thing.
Yeah, just, yeah. We won, right?
Whenever you approve an action, you have to make a determination of significance or non-significance, so area variances are under the law, type two.
Right, okay. Let's see that one. Okay, next is, Rosen Carlin, 8 Lane Gate Road.
Let me know.
Hi, identify yourselves, so we know who you are.
Yes, so I'm Annie Menace, I'm the architect of the property from Garrison Foundry. Homeowner is here as well, Roland Shorten, and we're here to discuss the guest cottage that we spoke about last month, which, just to remind everybody, I have the Beatty and Watson plan up here, but I also have the architectural plans as well, if we wanna look at anything. But because it is a side or a lot line variance, we are looking at, this is the existing cottage, and then, the existing cottage is also non-conforming, so we would be here anyway, and we're looking, it's an old cottage that's sort of fallen into disrepair, and we're looking to rebuild it on-site, slightly larger, and bring that lot line closer. I think it currently is 34 and a half, and I think the new cottage is 20 and a half. So it's a little under 1,000 square feet, I think currently it's around 300. And we're hoping to bring back the character of this historic cottage, very much in tune with the property, and hopefully enhance the property and the homeowner's utility of it. She recently became a grandmother, and she has family visiting, and she doesn't have a lot of bedrooms in her house, so she's hoping to use this a lot for her family.
This is, you're for a guest cottage reconstruction, requiring a front yard variance, where 60 feet is required, and 20 foot seven inches proposed, so you're looking for a 39.5 inch variance, correct?
I believe so.
Right, that's what it says on here, on my...
On the site plan, it actually reads it as 34 and a half, so I don't know if there was a...
All right, well, what do I have from the code enforcement says 39.5?
39.5, okay.
Okay. So you might as well go with that, give you 40 feet if you need it.
It's kind of small type, yeah, so thereabouts, yeah, exactly.
That's correct, is that right?
Yeah, Beatty and Watson, it says 34.5, I don't know, it's a little hard, it's tiny type, so I don't know if he read it as 39 and a half instead of 34 and a half, but the site plan reads 34 and a half, and going to 20.7.
All right, so it was, so you have, I have 39, 39.5 here, what do you, what would work for you? What are you looking for?
I mean, according to the site survey, it's 34 and a half.
34.6?
Existing, and then, the new is, we actually have it at 20.6, so it's very, it's very similar, but slightly, slightly less, I guess.
So that would basically be just one inch less of a variance, 'cause the way it was written up was 20 feet, seven inches.
Right, right, right.
Okay.
And then I guess it's 34 and a half versus 39 and a half.
That's the existing?
That's existing, yeah, correct. Correct.
Are you gonna take that down, or are you gonna take the, what do you have?
Well, it's in pretty bad shape. It was built, you know...
Anything is gonna be an improvement.
Yeah, exactly, it was two-by-fours, it's kind of, you know, fallen into some disrepair. We are kind of hoping to keep the chimneys, but we'll see, once we start doing construction, how much of it needs to be repointed and rebuilt, but, so most of it would probably end up going.
Right.
But the idea is really to kind of rebuild it and almost make it feel like this cottage has always been there, kind of keeping in tune with the property, and it has kind of a historic bent to it with our design, it has shake siding and, you know...
Well, it's on a private road, I don't see anybody around there, I don't see any problem. And you kept it at 998 square, so you wouldn't go over the thousand, so, I understand what you did there.
Well, yeah, well, truthfully, we're trying to keep it as tight, there's a lot of, like, little programs we're trying to fit in there, so, just tried to keep it as sufficient as possible.
Any questions? Anybody in the audience? Any questions over by the board right now? All right, let's go over the five factors here. All right, number one, will undesirable change be produced in the character of the neighborhood, or will a detriment to nearby properties be created by granting area variance? The answer is no, the application is replacing an existing cottage that is in disrepair. That is true, I saw that, and I agree with you 100 percent. Proposed structure is keeping with existing cottage, existing character of the old cottage and main house. The proposed cottage will still have a parcel of land between it and the main road, Lane Gate Road, preserving the rural and natural character of this street. Number two, can a benefit sought be achieved by some method feasible to pursue other than area variance? The existing site conditions and shape of the property, boundaries, make it difficult to fully relocate the cottage elsewhere on the property. Number three, is the requested variance substantial? No, it is only the front yard setback that is non-compliant. The front yard boundary is adjacent to an access easement to a neighboring property. So the property, proposed cottage, will still have a substantial setback from the main road, Lane Gate Road, and I saw that today when I looked at it, so it's, you're right. Will proposed variance have an adverse effect or impact on the physical and environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district? No, the proposed cottage, the main house, and other existing structures on the site do not exceed the impervious surface area allowance. The proposed new structure and plantings will enhance the natural surroundings and environmental, and blend with the existing landscape. Is alleged difficulty self-created? Yes, that's a good answer. Yes, but the existing structure, which is non-compliant, is currently in disrepair and unsafe. It will have to be rebuilt. The proposed cottage will allow the homeowner to keep the character of the existing cottage and provide additional space for her family. Well, I agree with all that, because, like I say, the cottage, it is way back off the road. It's been a private road, and then back in some more, so nobody would even see it, number one, it's not gonna affect anybody. And it definitely does need repair, so you're only making an improvement, you're not hurting anybody, so I agree with all that 100 percent. Does anybody have any other questions on this? Any questions on it? Anything? Anybody have any questions?
No.
Okay, no one in the audience has any questions? Okay, so at this point in time, I make a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now, I make a motion that this is a...
Type two action under seeker?
Type two action under seeker? Or not a type two, is a type two action?
Is.
Is a type two action. Second to that? Vinnie, second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, okay. Now I make a motion now, on the approval of the variance?
I vote to approve.
Approve, okay?
Approve.
Vinnie?
Approve.
I approve, you're all set.
Thank you.
Okay.
Wonderful, thank you so much.
All right, let me give you your paperwork here. All right, you know what to do with it. Good night, thank you, you're more than welcome. Okay. The National Center is 9 Cliffside Court.
Thank you.
You're welcome, good night now. One second, I'll be right with you. Okay, go ahead, who are you?
Good evening, my name is John Correll.
I'm sorry?
My name is John, oh, here, my name is John Correll, I'm the engineer for this project, and this is Amanda Vasta, she's the owner of the property.
Okay, I see, I saw I have a authorization for you to represent?
Yes.
Okay. Go ahead, give us a, let me tell you, first of all, I live in the area, so I know the problem down there, okay? It's been a problem for years, you know, with the dirt road and everything else like that, so I know, it looks like these guys have been going around a while, between boards and plans and everything else like that, so...
I guess it's not called Cliffside Court for nothing.
Yeah, I know.
The Vastas own a piece of property on Cliffside, obviously, it has steep slopes, and that's why we're here. The existing slopes exceed the standards, and we need a variance for that.
Right.
The driveway is code compliant. This is, we've been through the planning board, we have a health department approval for the septic system for a two-bedroom house, because there's very limited area for the septic system right here. That's my story.
Okay, it's my understanding that the area variance you're looking for from us is for a small portion of the driveway, and a small portion of the foundation that are over the 30 percent grade, is that correct?
Yes, yes.
Okay. What portion, do you know what portion that is of the driveway?
In percentage?
No, what portion of the driveway? Your driveway is about 400 foot, something like that, or?
Here's the driveway.
Right.
Here's the house, here's the septic system, well...
Right.
Colors. The blue is 20 to 35 percent, the red is greater than 35, which is minimal, it's over in here, because the septic system has to be 15 percent or less, so we've done that, and the beige is zero to 15 percent, and the rest is wedge.
Okay, so, what I'm saying is, the variance you're looking for us is for, from what I understand, is for a small portion of the driveway and a small portion of the foundation, is that correct?
Yes, yes.
Right?
The driveway, yeah, over...
That's correct.
Okay, what portion of the driveway is it, do you know? No?
What portion of it?
Yeah.
Well, this is the driveway.
I know, it's, how long is the driveway?
How long is it?
Goes to 400, it looks like, goes to 4, three, goes to 400 foot, right?
The driveway is 470 feet long.
470 feet.
Way off the road.
Right.
So is there any, any portion of the driveway does not need a variance, or is the whole thing super steep?
Yes.
The, oh.
How you doing? My name's Luis Ruiz, I'm Amanda's husband. So, the portion of the driveway, I believe, is about, I think it's 15 or just under 15 feet, what is just the cusp. So that's, we were initially gonna go straight, but that was way too much of a steep slope, so we had him redesign it to snake it over.
Okay.
To less of it, so, I think it's at a grade, I think it's only 0.2 percent, I believe it's 14 percent grade, it has to be, or under, so it's at 42.2 within those 15 feet.
Okay.
So we're over by 0.2 for the code, for 15 feet, or less, give or take. It's just the...
All right, I don't wanna interrupt you, but I know in your report from the engineer, you mentioned a moratorium or something like that, that's a moratorium, and moratorium is gone, okay? But there is a law passed for that area, okay, about different things and all that, but that law does allow us to give you the variance. I just wanted you to know, so, that moratorium was against building, period, you know, because you know, you know the disaster up there.
Yes.
I mean, you can't get through that road from one end to the other.
Yes.
You know, you can't get from Upland, you can't get from, I live in the area, so I know, so you can't get from Upland to Winston, or whatever, you know, to Old Albany, there's nowhere to get through completely.
We've been trying to help the community out as much as we can. Her father owns machinery.
Yeah.
I know how to operate the machinery. Couple months back, Upland flooded, there was no entrance.
Yeah.
Me and her father went down there, we opened it up, the drainage pipe extended it another 10 feet out.
Right.
And repaved it, so we have...
Oh, wait, I know, I know the, I know the problem, I know the problem in the area and all that. I went up today, did you stake it out a little bit for the, for the, for the planning board?
Yes.
The states that are there, did the planning board go Saturday?
Yes, they were there Sunday.
When is your next meeting with the planning board?
Next week.
Next week, is there a meeting with the planning, okay. Because what this is, this is a meeting to make sure we have all the information we need to make the decision, okay? Then we have a public hearing next month. Now what that is, we send letters to your neighbors, okay?
To the neighbors.
Then they'll have a chance to go and look at your plans, and, you know, talk to you or whatever like that, or committee and ask questions, and go from there, I guess, basically.
Yes.
And then at that meeting, if we decide that it's okay, then we would give you the variance, but you still, from my understanding, you still gotta go back to the planning board, correct?
Yes, but they would like to know if we could get the variance granted before they move along.
I understand, correct, right, but unfortunately, we couldn't move on until next month, we're at our next meeting.
Yes.
So I know you guys have been around the corner for a long time and all like that, you know, I guess I just wanted to say, maybe you could see the light at the end of the tunnel, as far as Charlie's finally getting through the tunnel.
Yes.
I understand your frustration.
We're gaining traction, and we're moving along, and we thank you for that.
Well, we're trying to help you, believe me, we're trying to help you as much as we can.
Yes.
So I understand your frustration. I've been there, so I know what it is, okay? So at this point, I think we have everything. Does anybody need any more information or anything else like that? I know you stayed...
The one thing that, just for clarity, the new law, you refer to us because parts of the driveway and parts of the house foundation are going to, are proposed to be constructed on slopes greater than thirty percent.
Yes.
So one thing that we're just, for the sake of precision, so we get it right, at the public hearing, because I know you gave us the map that shows, or the survey that shows the driveway, just make sure at the public hearing, you can, you identify for us specifically where on your map the driveway is going to exceed thirty percent, and the same thing with the house foundation, just so it's clear what we're, you know, approving.
Okay, and then for clarification on the foundation with the slopes, we are going to try to disturb as little as possible. I believe we're only going two feet. That's why we set the house backwards.
Right.
So instead of digging down into the slopes, we will be building up from them.
All right, so your house is pretty much going to be up on a top back there.
Yes, setback, and no, up top away from the road, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, and you're enough away from the end of your property, you don't need a variance there or anything like that.
Yes, we're in compliance there.
Okay, right, okay. Now, I spoke to one of the neighbors there, and I asked him about plowing in the winter, and he says, well, he says, when it snows, I just don't get up. He said, I wait till the next day, so your winter's going to be a little interesting, I can tell you that, talking to him.
But we also helped fix Cliffside Court as well.
Right.
So the plow truck gets up there very easily now.
So you know what you're getting yourself into, I guess is what I'm trying to say.
Yes.
Okay, great, all right. No other questions? Any questions on the board? We typically have everything we need at this time. All right, I'm going to ask for a motion to say that the package is complete and set a public hearing.
I'll make the motion.
You make...
I'll make the motion.
You make your offer? Okay. You'll second it?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, that's good. Now what I'm going to do is set your public hearing for next meeting, which is Monday, July eighth, okay? What will happen now, like I say, is a list of neighbors, your surrounding property, they'll get the information. I'm sure you probably talked to them or something like that, okay? If you, like this couple before us got letters, you know, from the neighbor, that always helps, you know? I mean, you know, if you get, you know, of course, one of the neighbors don't like it, don't get the letter, I mean, you know what I'm trying to say, but go around and get letters from me if you can, you know? If not, they can come.
Shouldn't be too hard, we have four.
They only got four, right? In the whole, in the whole, in the whole thing. Well, one good thing, the FedEx guy goes up there, because I went up there and I said, who the hell's going to go up here? But the FedEx guy, he went beyond me, he went up to the next house, and so I guess, I guess it's passable is what I'm trying to say. All right, that's it. You're all set, and then you'd better be July eighth, okay? Good night.
Thank you very much.
All right, good. And I wish you all the luck in the world, believe me.
Thank you very much.
All right, any old business, new business? Make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Second that motion, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, okay, that's it, thank you.